This is Tuesday, October twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty two, meeting of the Berlin Planning Board. As a preliminary matter, please note this meeting is being recorded and some of the attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you. Take care not to screen share your computer or anything that you broadcast may be captured by this recording. Uh, this is Tom Sanford, Chair of the Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that the members are present and can hear me prior to me calling the meeting to order. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jay Teach.
I.
Timothy Wheeler.
Yeah.
Carolyn McDonald.
Yeah.
Perfect. With a quorum of the board present, I call this meeting to order at seven thirty six P M on Tuesday, October twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty two. This is an open meeting of the Planning Board uh being conducted remotely consisted with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, two thousand and twenty due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth of Mass due to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. Specific information and general guidelines for the remote participation by members of the public and our annual parties with the with a right or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town of Berlin website at W W W dot town of Berlin dot com. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening using the Zoom platform as posted on the agenda, identifying how the public may join. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda after they have their after they've concluded their remarks. I'll invite each board member by name to provide any comment questions, penetrating insights. Please hold your motions until your name is called. Board members, please remember to mute your telephone or computer when not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps uh guarantee accurate minutes are recorded. And for any response, please wait until the I yield before to you to state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in conversation with one another, please do through so through me to avoid multiple conversations. Lastly, each vote taken here tonight at this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. All right. Thank you for your cooperation. That was easy.
Nothing about my bad T shirt either.
Next time.
Okay.
So um we don't really have a hell heavy agenda. I mean, we can talk about. Do we need to? We should do a follow up with um what came out of our forum that we had the last time?
With with Emily?
Yes, are they anticipating coming back? To chat with us or?
Ever again, you mean?
Ever again, is there a next step?
Um, I hadn't heard anything specific. I I think that they'll. Did she want to do? I was trying to think if there was another meeting that she wanted to have with town boards or anything. I'll reach out to her. You know, they've got this scheduled to run into next year, so I think she still anticipates probably having some additional meetings, and I think it was with other town boards just to get input from.
I thought so too. Yeah, and and just I think we should keep on it because if there's something that comes out that we need to change um bylaws or anything like that, we want to be able to be able to do that for Springtown meeting.
Right, yeah.
Right.
And we may need to, you know, create some language that may need some input from others.
Right. So uh, yeah, I'll uh, I'll get in touch with her if you want.
Oh, yeah, if that if you could, that would be helpful.
See what's what's on her schedule as she looks forward and I'm gonna chase Carrie again too because that Center Village study is supposed to be rejuvenated as well, so we want to get both of those running. So if we want to do some modification to zoning for the town meeting in May, we can do that.
Right. I think that.
Some notes from Emily that I can post. I need her final slides and then she was taking notes and then she's gonna attend you list.
So I noticed in your minutes. What do we have? We have twelve people participate in person and.
Something like that.
Did she tell you how many she had remote?
It's like a half a dozen.
Yeah, eleven or something. I don't know. She I'll ask her. I'll send her email and find out.
You want me to move your minutes, assuming that you will at some point add those um numbers?
Yep.
Uh, so I'll make that motion.
And I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the meeting from last meeting with some minor amendments. Uh, I'll ask you any further discussion. Seeing none, I'll ask you to vote. Tim Timothy Wheeler.
I.
Carolyn McDonald.
Hi.
Jay Teach.
Hi.
Uh, Tom Sanford, I.
I saw it said move.
Also need to approve approve the previous minutes because we didn't or did we do that at the uh?
We did it at the other meeting.
At the town hall we did?
Yeah.
Yep, real quick at the opening.
Yep.
All right, I'll put that in here. I think I put a topic on to discuss fees and I was gonna do some more homework on that and make a spreadsheet so we can kind of compare ourselves to the our neighbors, but I didn't have the time, so maybe we should postpone that.
Yeah, you're right. I mean, when we looked at those other towns, it's clear that except for maybe Boylston, we're kind of out of phase, so.
We're out of touch. Yeah, absolutely.
It's funny though, because they when I I did the ones that you sent, Tim, I put those in a spreadsheet and and there's kind of all over the map. I mean, I think we are overall low, but different towns have different uh expensive.
Right. Yep.
Thing. And then uh Bolton was very creative. They've got all sorts of stuff, you know. They've got uh fuel surcharges and administrative fees and mailbox. Change the numbers on your mailbox. But
that that's.
We only have three fees. And world is going towards lots of different, lots of variety.
Yeah, but like like if we charged money to change the numbers on your mailbox, we would have people who would just take their mailbox down. I mean, that's.
Let me find out what the real ones are. Okay. How about this one? Bed and breakfast establishments. Hand toed special permit. Oh, here's a good one. Barnes, stable and carriage house preservation special permit.
Hmm.
Scenic. Building inspector fees, you know?
Yeah.
A tree. And then there's this phosphor bird thing, F O S P R D. Does anybody know what that is?
What F O S what?
P R D. It's like uh it's like some type of overlay area, I think. It's like a institutionalized uh zoning thing.
Like a rehab kind of place or?
Uh, it was more open space. I think of the O S is open space.
So forest.
Maybe, yeah. I guess there was a definition in one of the mailings we got and I thought I'd sent that around. You know, Bolton only thing. The other mail that came in to just say is that the marijuana. They pulled their permit or pulled their application. The one on Bigelow.
Yeah, yeah, they've filed the notice of intent with the Conservation Commission. We're in the middle of peer review. It is such a massive building.
But no, they they withdrew it today.
Oh, pulled it pulled it is in that way?
Let me just take a look here.
I can't even believe that 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 they would do that.
Maybe I was in a different uh time zone here, let's see. Well, hold that thought while I look for it.
Okay.
I on another subject. I was uh going over the Donald Lynch Boulevard report again. And you get deep into some of the recommendations and there's this section that talks about it will also be important to continue discussion of the district with the town of Berlin. In initial discussion with the Berlin Economic Development Committee during this process, interest was expressed to learn more about future zoning for the district. It would be beneficial to the district to have similar zoning regulations on the properties that are in both municipalities. Solomon Pond Mall is the largest and highest profile property that is located in both municipalities. As an example of the coordination that is needed, the property may benefit from allowing multifamily development as a secondary property use under certain conditions. And the most viable locations for adding housing on the property may be the rear parking areas near the Assabert River that are within the town of Berlin.
Hmm.
And then later they say a valuable implementation action could be the exploration of intermunicipal agreements to support redevelopment. In particular, the agreement could include discussion of housing in the district that may in some cases be proposed on properties that are located in both Marlboro and Berlin. An intermunicipal and intermunicipal agreement would give both municipalities a clear understanding for the provision of public services to the residential uses, including fire and public safety services, school bus routes, infrastructure for the provision of water and wastewater. A joint agreement could define such municipalities' expectations and set the conditions for a successful redevelopment with benefits and impacts to both communities. So this was formulated in July of two thousand and twenty one, so it was a that was their draft final report. But of course, since then, they've implemented all the complete streets recommendations or a significant number of them because they've changed Donna Lynch, you know, in quite a few ways. So I it seems as though they're taking action on some of this um. And I I would think it would be helpful for us to make a move along with the Economic Development Committee and say, let's chat because uh we if we did want to make some modifications to the overlay. My recollection is the language is the same between the two towns, so that anything that they would want to modify, we would want to be included in. They also talk about this Assabert River Bike Way and trying to link up with that and Hudson and and then try to lead that along the property along the river. Um, sometime somehow link up with River Bridge and and uh it almost seems like they hint about the possibility of connecting to the aqueduct somehow um to that route from this side, you know, so there's implications there. And then
does the does the aqueduct cross Whitney?
Yeah.
Yeah, figured that had to be where it was.
You know, when you go over the bridge past where Keeler used to be, well, S N S.
S A.
S A Farms, yeah, just beyond that. Well, actually, he's right along the aqueduct the whole stretch, so.
Yeah.
But that's where that's where the link is and the nice thing about Whitney is it's got wit um. You know, if you want to think about people using that with a bicycle, it's not out of the question like some places would be, so.
And not as much truck traffic. I mean, not as much weekend traffic.
Right. Um, so I I you know, the Economic Development Committee has worked with the Economic Development Committee in Marlboro a little bit. And I know Liz Kelly, I guess that's her name, right from the the owners of the mall now, she's still eager to chat with us.
Right. Has anyone reached out to her to kind of schedule something?
No, I the last time I talked to her, I said I'd bring it up with the board and and we'd try to set up something um. You know, how would we feel? Would we want to talk to her first or do we want to talk to Marlboro first or both of them together or?
I think that we should probably find out what they want.
The mall.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because if Marlboro's doesn't, you know, maybe they're not willing to go as far as she wants to go.
Yeah, I mean, she was talking. She she threw out housing, she threw out medical services, she threw out hotel. It it's a lot of those are topics that they include in their list. I mean, in the back of their document, they have a a significant list of uses they'd allow by right, uses they'd allow with a special permit, uses that they might not allow at all. So and it's pretty extensive. Which I thought you know, was a helpful base now. It'd be good for Thomas to sort of rethink where we stand because because he wrote significant parts of the first that overlay, trying to understand what our mutual responsibilities would be with Marlboro, whether we can unilaterally make changes to our side without their agreeing. I mean, my recollection is we had this intermunicipal agreement and and it I think as part of that, we almost drew up that zone and jointly in such a way that it it committed us both, you know, to a series of uh responsibilities. So I don't would they they talk, I mean, they they mentioned the intermunicipal agreement in their study here, so it seems like they they expect there has to be some sort of conversation at some point.
How did you get? How did you get ahold of that report?
Liz.
So no one from Marlboro even sent that.
They may have sent it to the Economic Development Committee, but I didn't get it. Did I send this around to everybody yet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I keep thinking I have, but then.
I I it's filed then.
I'll send it again.
Okay.
I'll do it right now. Because it's um, it's it's a good study. I I thought, boy, there's a lot in here that we would be comfortable with, I think.
What are the kinds of things that they in their study at least say that they would not allow?
Well, the first thing I have to do is send this to everybody. Tom is M. What is it?
Uh, Meliora.
Melior.
Meliorist, I believe, yeah.
Okay, it's on its way. All right, where am I?
By the way, I sent you guys a copy of the withdrawal notice.
So they withdrew their whole proposal.
I got that from Eloise.
Today.
Miracle.
Seven twenty three.
I'm gonna go look at that right now.
Boy, that's a lot of work from a lot of people.
That's a lot of work from a lot of people, but.
The host agreement was right? All that was in place, wasn't it?
Maybe they planned it when the interest rates were two and a half percent and now it's seven.
I can't imagine a marijuana facility couldn't be profitable no matter what.
Right.
And it's not like the well, I guess I guess that's not really something that I can say. I was gonna say that the the family has a lot of holdings that they've had for a long time, so you would think financing might not be an issue, but who knows? Formal withdrawal of a special permit applet. So that's very interesting because they've already put a well in that on that property.
That's an expense.
That's an expense that they're gonna be looking to recover. Um.
I I have a property, a piece of land in Pepperell that we put a well in. We were gonna build a house and now I'm gonna let it sit maybe a couple of years from now.
Uh, that is fascinating. Great news for the for the environment. They were jamming that building right up against the wetlands.
Pretty amazing how fast the real estate uh environment has changed in the last few months.
But they own that property outright. They were just gonna in as far as I know, they were not selling the property. They were just going to um build the building and and lease it.
Right.
My my guess is there's something else.
Well, like I noticed the uh in Boston, what's going on now is there was a huge amount of office space and office construction that it was getting abandoned during COVID, right? So everybody started switching it all over to lab space. Like everyone had the same same decision at the same time. Now all of a sudden, there's this in certain areas, at least there's a glut of lab space, so the prices are dropping like rocks.
Right, and there's also been some pushback on some of the from some of the suburbs closer to Boston, but not right in downtown Boston on the lab space.
Yeah. I think in uh what's Westboro. Or Westboro.
Right, well, I know native.
There's still a reasonable market out here. For some reason.
Still depends on location, Jay, because they're still building um stuff and we looked at a proposal the other day for something in Somerville. And uh then we looked at something else in Cambridge that they're going to weasel in. So you know, there's stuff that's still being built for that, but it's you're right, there's a glut of it.
Yeah. Well, and a lot of the large developers are using their own money, so they yeah, bank rates to this effect.
You see in some of the institutions now getting active hospitals and um colleges and stuff like that, universities. They usually build when things are slow because they figure they get a better bang for their buck.
Um, speaking of marijuana, I'm looking at the list eligible uses, the following uses are permitted by right. And that's things like restaurants, brew pubs, medical offices, public buildings um religious buildings, childcare centers, stuff like that. Following additional uses are permitted by special permit. Multifamily dwellings. Retirement community overlay. Yard sale, artist studio with live work gallery space. Retail sales and services. Hotels. And outdoor recreational uses. Adult use marijuana retail.
Hmm.
Medical marijuana treatment center. Medical and or adult use marijuana cultivator, independent testing laboratory, product manufacturer or transporter. Of course, Berlin couldn't do anything with a retail outlet at Bannadore because we weren't going to be allowed to go through D C U's um parking lot because it was in a zone that didn't allow it and here they are. They haven't done it, but potentially it's on the list of uses that might be allowed in the this zone now.
So it is their zoning such that the D C U is in a different zone than the rest of the mall?
No, it this right now, none of the zone for Donald Lynch allows marijuana.
Oh, that's one of the prohibited.
Right, and so when we were when we were looking at the possibility of having a retail out of Bannadore, Marlboro said, no, you can't do that because you'd have to travel through Marlboro to get to it on a private way, and so that's not allowed. So don't go there. This is the the possible lists by the and it doesn't necessarily mean it would shake down to this eventually, but um this is the list that the consultant generated. And so that's one of the uses that would be allowed by a special permit. But all uses not noted above shall be deemed prohibited, including but not limited to the uses listed below, single family houses, conversion of detached one-two family houses, boarding, elogium, homes, veterinary hospitals, kennels, riding academy, sorry, Jay. Private clubs. Car parking lots. Auto service facilities, car washes. Funeral homes. Any adult uses. Tattoo shops.
Hmm.
Cemeteries, farms and poultry farms, golf courses. Hens for personal use.
Hens?
Yeah, hens, chicken hens.
That's a bizarre thing to call out.
Well, it's probably from some of their other other efforts, but um where was that other piece? Place for repair cars. Oh, contractors yard, landscaper contractors yard and a contractor's yard. Oh, contractors yard, landscaper contractors yard and a contractors yard, so.
Those. Interesting that they didn't allow car parks, but they wanna have a bus park.
Right. Well, they might not mind the bus park because that's in Berlin.
Yeah.
True.
Anyway, um, and that's just a draft. I mean, that's not necessarily where they'd finally settle, um, but that gives you a a general idea of. What the consultants were suggesting in terms of uses in response to the work they did with the Economic Development Committee over there and. The landowners, the landowners all said, you know, we we need more, we we need to build on smaller lots, you need to be able to. Give us smaller lots that we could develop. You know, instead of a two-acre minimum, go to a one-acre minimum, we'd like to reduce the green area requirement. Um, it to as much, it there's a suggestion in here that it could be reduced to as much as eighty percent um would. A buildable area would be as much as eighty percent. And uh. But anyway, interesting study and so maybe when we meet and Thomas is uh. Well, what do you think? Do we want to talk to Liz first or?
Yeah.
Well, I think it's a good idea.
I mean. When do we meet again? We meet on the. Do we wanna? Invite the Economic Development Committee and Liz to chat with us for a little bit or something?
Sure.
Yeah, I think that sounds like a good idea.
What do you want, shoot for like eight o'clock?
Right now, we even open an agenda, so.
Gonna be attending on the eighth because it's gonna be one thirty in the morning.
And. Yes, uh, speaking of vacations, though, it's it's a ways away, but. Glenn and I are going to Hawaii for two weeks in February.
Nice.
So we'll have.
February or early?
Late February, late February.
So after the warrants closed, that's fine.
Oh, thanks.
No, but I mean.
Yeah, no, I I hear you, yes, after.
If you were gone early February, we'd be saying, oh, shh, you know, damn, we'd have to try to get stuff squared away. But if you're over here for that first meeting in February, then we're fine, I think.
Yeah, we leave the twenty-first. Right, so but we just need to look at a calendar and decide if you guys are gonna have. Someone else host the Zoom meeting, not have a meeting or be in person.
Jay will do it.
Is that gonna be on the seventh?
No, the fourteenth, Valentine's Day.
Oh, that's good, because on the seventh, I'm gonna be in Prescott Isle.
Right, so we're going, let me pull up a calendar here.
You're leaving on the twenty-first?
Of February for two weeks.
Why don't you leave on the twenty-second?
Because we already bought our plane tickets.
Anyway.
Right, so um.
If the internet on planes now.
Twenty-first to the seventh, right, so.
So the fourteenth, if we got our zoning articles pretty well squared away by the fourteenth. So you were happy, even if we didn't finalize them that night and just had to do some tweaking for a vote on the twenty-eighth weeks. Well, I think the selectmen probably close the war on the twenty-seventh, so no, we'd have to do it on the fourteenth.
Right. Okay, right, so then it would be.
Vacation that way.
You're welcome. Yep, so letting all my prospective boards know that they're gonna need to figure it out. Um, but yeah, so February twenty-eighth is in jeopardy as far as. Being able to meet on Zoom.
Yeah. Jay will do it.
Does Jane know how to do it?
Well.
You'll learn by then.
Yeah, I can take some training sessions.
I still can't get used to this face.
I know.
I'm gonna move, just keep watching.
So, um, Jay sent out a whole bunch of homework the other day.
Yeah, you have to report on at least, well, now with Tom, uh, Thomas not here, right, to report on four of them.
Right, well, there were only six.
Right.
So if you're taking four.
Caroline gets two.
Yeah. Um, but one of the things, so the car dealership, I thought that we had. Talked about doing some sort of bylaw. When we were tweaking bylaws for last year. Didn't we talk about doing something about a dealership? Or no?
I think when Lynn was bringing up the issues related to the junkyard. Or recycling facility, she was saying, well, what if they wanna start to a car dealership there, didn't she?
Right, and maybe that's why I relate the word car dealership, because now that you say that, I think she just kept using that as an example.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, that that's a very inaccessible location. I don't understand that.
It's a very.
Going stuff online, probably.
Say that again?
He must maybe maybe selling cars online and that's just a pickup spot or something.
Maybe, but it's a maximum of ten. Cars.
Yeah, and he may be restoring them because he's got a little shop, body body shop there, I think.
There is an auto body shop across the street. Do you think that's his?
Think so.
Oh, I'm not sure.
That would make way more sense, because the whole thing has been like, what the heck is going on? But if that guy owns, if the auto body shop also is that same person, that way makes. A heck of a lot more sense about all of it.
That would make sense, plus that's like the hottest property in all of Berlin now because. You guys bought. That piece of land that's been for sale for the last century.
Right.
And then Shiro got sold.
Right.
Both for roughly, I think the piece of land was four hundred and Shira was five hundred, but the building is a complete disaster.
They're doing a boatload of work in it.
Well, a Brazilian contractor bought it and is fixing it up and I think gonna rent it, maybe make it into a restaurant. But all that stuff about that Lynn was poking us on about. Storage of construction vehicles, I guess at least a thousand people uh looked at that property. Expecting to be able to have their contracting business keep all of its vehicles there.
Really?
And when everybody figured out that we zoned against that, those people went away.
Is that why it was for sale for so long?
Uh, I think. It's a complete wreck, the the uh, there was, well, there were some issues going on inside and. Some unwanted unhappy guests took. The air conditioning condenser, the heating system and stripped all the copper pipes out of the basement and on top of that, it was in pretty rough shape to begin with.
Wow.
So it's a huge renovation task that's going on.
Right.
But I think they, this is a professional group that have a history of doing a good job.
Awesome.
Restaurant back.
Yeah.
That would be fabulous.
Yeah, it's a good location for a restaurant.
Yeah.
That's a pretty cool building. Probably not for a restaurant.
Didn't it, someone, it was either you, Tim, or Louise. For some reason, I can hear Louise talking about this too. It used to be a. A soldier's home.
Yeah, it was a rooming house for a while. And then briefly, after the restaurant closed, it's the kids owned it as a group. And I think they were running as a rehab uh facility for a little while. But that kind of melted down.
Right. Interesting. And then what else was in all of the stuff that you sent? So there was that special permit.
It was wasn't, I didn't read it all carefully, but wasn't one of the towns nearby talking about modifying their ADU zoning?
Uh, one second, Tom, Eloise has her hand up. Eloise.
Sorry, I started talking and then I realized I was. I just sent you all an email email that I got from Lynn Ryan concerning um the Route twelve. The the car on Old Central Street. That's that's all I know.
Okay, excellent.
Yeah, we've got their application, their variance application, that's what I sent them. But anyways, I've noticed ADUs is the hot thing now. There was a very interesting podcast. About. How California, in trying to address their housing crisis, has decided ADUs is the way to go. So the builders are buying up all these, you know, single-family homes everywhere and putting another home in the backyard.
Yeah, I was reading our, reading the bylaws and. If we are going to encourage that, we need to figure out how to make sure that. That's not what happens. Now, one of the things that we require is that it meet. So that the septic and well. You know. Is able to accommodate the buildings.
Right.
But.
So I think it's Watertown, one of the communities closer to Boston is also on this mission. As a way of generating more affordable housing. I think it's Watertown, I can check. But. It might make sense because particularly here, you don't have, I'm assuming you've got extra capacity in your well and septic. There's a whole bunch of building cost that goes away.
Right.
You had more bedrooms to an existing property. Makes things affordable because you can live in one unit and rent the other.
Correct, so does that then have the effect of raising property values? Therefore, making first time home buying even more expensive?
Well, it might, I mean, I've encouraged my kids to buy or everybody I know is trying to buy their first home to buy a duplex.
Right.
And then if you're. Construction inclined, you can fix one side, well, fix the other side and then move on to your own single family.
Right, that's what I did.
But it's probably something we should, we should learn more about. It's a choice we haven't really talked about that much for affordable housing.
Right.
And then Concord has something going where they will put, they will allow. Ten units on five acres, and I don't know if that's a permanent zoning change. Or something special, I was talking to someone about it the other day, who lives there, and it sounded like it may be a permanent. Change, like they maybe they did, we were doing and picked out certain areas in town where they wanted to allow that and then needed by right.
One of the things that's happened to municipalities that are served by the um. The T. MBTA communities and adjacent communities. Have to submit a plan whereby they'd create a significant amount of. Housing. Um, within a certain distance of the MBAT MBTA lines. And the the density is up in that range, um, or higher, actually. That they'd have to jump to Berlin because we're in the donut. Um, we're, we're not an MBTA community or adjacent, we don't have to do that, fortunately, but. Between Boston and Worcester, there's only a handful of towns that that escape and we're one of them, um, Hudson. Berlin.
Hey, this is a requirement, not a reward for doing.
Yeah, you've you've got to, you've got to do the plan to explain how you'd create, wh- where you, where you would. Create this housing. They modified it a little bit so that towns that are adjacent to the MBTA communities, the pure MBTA communities. Um, don't have to do quite as much as they initially thought they were gonna have to, but. Um, they're talking densities of. You know, ten units per acre and, well, even more in some cases.
Right.
Concord would be an MBTA community.
Right. Um, it's to the point, some of the communities are so upset about it. There's one town on the South Shore, I wanna say it's Fall River, but it might not be. That they have a brand new MBTA station.
Yeah.
That's almost completed, that they don't want to open. Because then they'll become an MBTA community.
Well.
I I I understand the motivation, but it's. The M, the the T, the train goes through way too many different kinds of communities to have. A one-size-fits-all. Kind of bill.
Yeah, and that's why they they did roll it back a little bit, um. But uh. There's towns like Littleton and stuff like that that really have to come up with some strategy.
And Concord, I mean, Concord doesn't have that kind of space near their train station.
Right.
Because it's right downtown. Um, and I'm sure there's plenty of other places that are like that, too, but. Very interesting. So Jay, the other thing that you sent. Kind of were some legal notices of hearings that the planning board in Hudson. So it's November first and they're voting on several different things.
Yeah, marijuana.
Medical marijuana. Um, establish Owen uh deliveries to be open, operate and receive deliveries. That's that one. Yeah, between eight and ten, that's crazy. This one is. No dwelling shall contain less than a thousand square feet, oh, for a retirement community overlay district. And then this one is site. Plan approval. Zoning law. I'm gonna have to read all the words. This one doesn't make sense, hold on. Public hearing on whether the town will amend section seven. Point one point seven site plan approval of zoning bylaws to add the following section. Seven point seventeen point twelve, appeal, the planning board's decision may be appealed to a court. Of competent jurisdiction.
Yeah, unless you know the section, it's kind. Unless you know the section, it's kind of hard to understand.
Right. And it looks like Marlboro is. Doing some zoning about roof overhang.
Yeah, if you've got a roof that hangs, it can project up to sixty inches into the required yard setback and not. And it's permitted. So they're not gonna call an overhanging roof as part of the structure.
Like a covered porch kind of thing. Cool. And then Stinky Farm and that's.
Yeah.
Everything Jason.
Yeah.
I thought that was done and sorted.
No, it's pretty bad. Last couple. Weeks in particular.
I I just, I find it astonishing. With all of the fines that he has paid and all of the lawyers fees that he has paid, that he's back at it.
What is that?
What's S and A Farms?
Yeah. Is that San Juan Inza?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's like. Been in trouble for decades, right?
Yep.
And what's the smell from?
Just everything that's just rotten and dying in there.
He takes um commercial food waste. And composts it on his property. Under the guise of feed for animals.
Lovely. That's what I need to get my compost pile to ferment faster. Fish, like if I could get scrapped fish from a local. Fish processing plant, my manure pile would be amazing.
Yeah, there were some, there were some drone photos from the last time this. Was an issue. And there were piles. Of boxes in various stages of openness that said Butterball on them. And there were. Plastic wrapped. Packages. Laying on top of the pile.
He was waiting for Thanksgiving.
It was just after Thanksgiving, actually. He also got a bunch of loads of cranberries, so it was. Bright red with dotted plastic wrap turkeys.
You know, I'm I'm looking at the Google Maps right now. From uh, well, it says twenty twenty two, it doesn't give a. Specific date, so it's, but it's this year. And the site is is greener than it's been in years, although there's a number of uh excavators on the site that are. Looks like they're working on compost, but it says S A Farms temporarily closed. But. Um, as the summer progressed. He got, he got seriously active again. I mean, this looks like a wasteland in there, so.
Right. So the last time this happened, and I don't know the status of what's going on now, but the last time this happened. He ramped back up about a month before his probation ended.
Well, did they commit to the daughter?
Could be. I have no idea. I I'm.
It almost seems like some of the people from North Row felt that that was what transpired.
Could be. Um, yeah, I know that he. Was facing possible jail time the last time. I don't know whatever wound up happening. But it's just. The level of insistence that he continues. On his part is what's astonishing to me. So.
Was in Weston when I was, when I was a kid, but they must have kicked him out.
Yeah, he's been kicked out of several. Towns. For this same activity. Unbelievable. Anything else on the agenda? Timely items.
I'm the items now. I think we've done everything of timely itemness.
Well, I'll check with um. Emily and Carrie and. I'll get in touch with Liz.
Okay.
I move that we adjourn.
I second that.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, I will ask you to vote. Jay Teach.
Aye.
Callan McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Motion to close the meeting at eight thirty one P M.